This to virtual level as I have you yet, but I think that those those ideas are out there. Circulated. So it's not. So this scope, I would say is carbon capture and sequestration. Hydrogen, data and hyperscales, hyperscalers.
Renewables and next generation oil.
Yeah. And so then like that would be like enhanced oil recovery. Um, get lots of carbon to extract more oil out of oil fields. And so. You know, every county in the state is kind of different. Minerals county by any means, you know, very agricultural. Uh, renewables aren't even, we don't have a lot of wind. And so, um, yeah, I mean, we're just like trying to get perspectives of. What, you know, from a county commission level, like moving into the future? What does that look like? Data centers, you know, I, I do know that Laramie and. I guess probably the town of Laramie is a bit constrained. Power wise.
Think there'll be anybody coming in to take data centers.
Yeah, unless we, unless like kind of a micro reactor or something.
I know AWS was looking into uh here and Hannah of all places. Um, just to see temperature wise. Um, just the lower ambient temperature here. I, and I just happen to know that from a family member. Um, cause he came out and he's his grandparents lived here and he's a relative of my wife and. We had supper with him and just casually asked what he was doing. He said, oh, we're. That's exactly what he he was looking for. We're gonna build, we want to build big buildings that can be cooled naturally. Um, to defray some of the cost that would cost us otherwise anywhere else. So.
And I do think by definition with the hyperscalers you are gonna get. You're getting some discussion on micro grids. I think there's a little bit of a balance between. The utilities and the, and the folks who want to do behind the meter power and you know, as we need, we can build it. Um, we can run it. We don't need to really tap into the grid. But in many cases, they still want to have access to the grid. So that claim of hey, we're gonna use the grid one percent of the time. It almost doesn't matter at some level how much you're using it. If you use it at all, you've got to have a genti. And that that costs money, right? So it's gonna be an interesting discussion to figure out who's gonna bear the cost. Um, or genties. So we're looking, one of the things we're looking to do is. Go coordination between the utilities, the co-ops and, and the, the folks who are looking to, to. To bring additional power into the, the states and counties.
Well, I know uh Wheatland's REA was very good about making sure that they're, they were covered with the last development at the Auswell. Wind turbine site. Um, they, they made sure they, all their infrastructure was paid for, so they weren't having to bear the, the burden of the backbeat.
Yeah, that's, that's a good segue too. I'm curious what the experience has been. So you said you have six utility scaling projects in the county. How's the, how have the developers been? How have they been in terms of engaging with the community, engaging with you guys?
I think that.
I've had the job three months, but I, I deal directly business wise outside of this environment um with. The actual installers and the maintainers.
Okay.
I, I think that they've all been pretty good. We've struggled with the rail tie.
Okay.
Um, because they haven't engaged like. What we would have liked them to with the community and certainly the um. Uh, historical preservation. Really not happy with them.
Okay.
And.
But that comes down.
Moving along at like the snail pace. But did you have comment?
Yeah, I did. Uh. It's been hard to know what questions to ask from this perspective because I'm not a wind expert, uh nor a grid expert. Um, and. That has been difficult to evaluate um when there are no. Resources to be able to tie into easily a clearinghouse with resources. Like if somebody said, I want to put a micro uh nuclear project in your facility. If you could go to this clearinghouse and say, these are the questions that you need to ask.
Yeah.
What does it do to water? What does it do to the infrastructure? What type of housing will be required? What type of jobs? Those are things I'm not expert in, um but I get to make a decision. Um, and sometimes feel unable to make a quality decision because I don't have quality data. Um, and it is really difficult to find that data even when you're looking. Um. It's been difficult with some of the people I talked to. A lot of the utility scale does not help the residents of Albany County. So if rail tie could tie into our grid and reduce the cost of our electricity. It would be a much easier sell, an amazingly much easier sell of. But I know there are other fish in that water that are difficult, right? There's a regulated monopoly that has the contract to. Albany County and the city of Laramie, the rail tie is not a part of. They have to convince that regulated monopoly to. Purchase that power. That's a difficult conversation and not one that I think the regular population knows. And so they go like, well, why won't they give us power from the wind that's being, that's disrupting our skyline? How come we can't benefit from that?
Sure. Uh, that's like, that's, and that's a common question. I do think, um. Yeah, I mean, those are all really good questions and concerns to, to bring up. I think. Have you all had the opportunity to? Talk much with the developers throughout the process? So one of, one of the things we are working on, we have. We have a good amount of experience with this community engagement in general. Have they, have they been able to have open houses and speak to residents and Jason Landos and folks like that?
Yeah, they certainly did. But then it's like they, they've created a vacuum now.
Yeah.
And um it's difficult to um get them to return phone calls and.
Phone calls from, from the commissioners.
From anybody.
Wow, okay.
That's it. Yep. Once they, once they got the approval, it seems, and then there's been a company switch also.
Okay.
Um. Makes it incredibly difficult to uh. The, the company previous was well engaged, had everything. Now maybe that was just the cost of doing business. Never knows. But now this company seems like they are not as interested in engaging.
Does the commission have a decision-making authority over any of these projects, any, you know, aspects of the permitting process? Um, citing.
Yeah.
Yep.
So assuming you hold public hearings.
Yep, yep. And we did multiple.
Yeah, I think we did all the things and with the original company. They were good to work with and you could call them and they answered and they responded and. And then once the, they sold the project to somebody else. Sort of like crickets.
Are the public hearings well attended?
Yes.
Yep, very well attended. One went for five hours. Um, in our district courtroom. So that does hundreds of people.
What are some of the main concerns that your residents have?
Viewshed, um, property value, uh. Destruction of the property value. Uh, misinformation, plenty of misinformation, right? Like uh. The uh. Noise coming off of the. Cause some sort of health problems with people nearby. Um, and so all of those things and everything. Um, and one person's viewshed interrupted is another person's. I like seeing wind mist, right? And, and so.
Or we all like the pro, we all like wind.
Sure.
But not in our backyard.
You get the NIMBY. Yes. And if you go to the north end of the county, they're perfectly fine with it because the folks that are having to endure the view are the ones that are also profiting off the leases.
Sure.
Um. And, and there's, we have a thriving incorporated community that basically will tell you that it wouldn't exist without wind turbines and wind projects. To keep it stirred and. And occupied, so.
Do you see a divide between new residents, so people that have maybe moved here in the last five or 10 years for?
Absolutely.
In what regard would you like? So yes, we, there are a lot of people moving from out of state into this community.
So are the newer residents generally the ones that are against these projects?
I don't know that there's.
Yeah.
It's, it's the viewshed again, um, property value. Yeah, it just rolls right back into it. Um. Laramie or the Albany County community did a big push here 10 or 15 years ago to try to um. Not recruit, um, in, entice um older folks to retire in the community and they did a heck of a job. And now that's actually coming to fruition. And so we have a lot of older folks that are wanting to retire here, no income tax or state income tax, that kind of thing. Um, and what they were sold 10 years ago is not necessarily what they're getting now. So we're. We're getting a little bait and switch.
Yeah.
It's a common theme throughout the state that we've heard from elected officials that are. Uh, there's a vibe between the newer residents who have moved here for some of the, you know, peace and their viewshed, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they want the Wild West experience.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think what would be helpful too, uh would be um. If, if this is part of the project, and I'm not sure if I understand it entirely. Uh, the, it's, so the inconsistency of, of wind, right? It makes a bunch of power when the wind's blowing. Makes nothing when the wind's not. Um, so pumped hydro. Um, seems to be a solution in many, in some places already. It's not new technology um. Or compressed gas. Um, also uh. Batteries, I think everybody thinks about big batteries the size of boxcars, right? But it's just potential energy in my mind. And so what are the opportunities for potential energy? With the summit sitting right there, a thousand feet above, uh you would think, but pumped hydro would be an interesting solution. Now, I'm sure there's plenty of. Problems with that whole rascal too. And what type of investment would you need to make to make something like that a reality? Um, so.
If you show us an energy project, we'll, we'll find people who hate it.
Right, right.
Oh, absolutely.
Ryan, is there a push for people uh to consume the energy at where it's being generated? Or store it where it's being generated instead of doing a, a grid tie? Is that where they're?
Uh, I mean, I mean, there, I think there is, I think there is some desire in communities to.
Because that is kind of.
Micro grid.
Okay, that, that is kind of the problem with any kind of renewable is.
Yeah, but yeah, but it's, it's just extremely difficult to, I mean, anybody I've spoken to. Who develops projects and has to do 30 or PPAs will tell you it's extremely difficult to say, you know. This electron starts here and goes to this other place. They simply, they simply link together the, the producer and the buyer, right? Um, so yeah, I think, I think a lot of communities will say, yes, we want like, we're gonna look at it. We're gonna hear it, whatever it is, you want the electricity here. And there's not a, there's not a fantastic. Um, silver bullet answer to that concern.
Yeah. I didn't know if there was a big push for it or if that's a.
In, in, in most communities that are considering, considering renewable energy, you will have. Folks that are against it and that will certainly be a talking point, right? That this isn't even gonna be consumed here. Why are we?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So the best answer you can come up with is, you know, the more energy that there is on the grid, the, the lower the cost will be generally, right? Just supply and demand. Not entirely satisfied when you. Division with the two hundred angry people, right?
Yeah, it's when you're one on one with the angry person, that's usually a little more dangerous.
Yeah, Wyoming, I'd still like to hear that Californians are getting the benefit of all of the. Energy development here.
They really don't.
California and Oregon.
Um, just to bump off this subject, um rare earth minerals has been a real hot topic around here. Um, I'm hoping that's not a hype. Um. And we're, we're, that's kind of a. Quietly see what happens. Um, can you guys shed any light on that? I know between Albany and Platte County, there's. Supposedly reported a significant deposit that we've. Albany County's had a hundred plus year history with pump and dumps with gold mines, so.
And diamonds.
And yeah, there's, there is a diamond mine south of town.
Well, I know, but.
Way south of town in Colorado. Uh, it's seven miles over the line. Um. But I, I don't know, have you had any conversations with Platte County or to see what that's gonna look like?
Um, so.
Or if that's even in, in your, your wheelhouse with this clearinghouse.
So was, but the problem is, is the critical minerals. That we can pull in Wyoming are not on USGS's critical minerals list.
So there's a big push and obviously it's supported by the state that they expand the critical minerals list to include a lot of what Wyoming produces. And for about a year and a half, we'd go around and ask about critical minerals and nobody really knew of anything and. Learned a lot of information on any. And so that's when we decided to pivot and uh start looking at data centers. Because that was, we're getting more questions about data centers and seeing more views about data centers being developed in the state than. Critical minerals. Now I think maybe if there are more critical minerals added to that list, like you have Corona. I think there's definitely a, a reason to maybe go back and either add to the clearinghouse or, or have some other sort of. Uh, report.
I will say that um, so under my purview, I run the energy matching funds program. I oversee the energy matching program. Um. And this last, we're working through um a round of funding and. I would say a, a portion of ours and in the past have been critical minerals and there's. Um. The interest has been in Platte County. And so I, I think that there, um, I think it's still kind of in the exploration. We need to, you know, I do know that um Dr. Campbell's office, the Wyoming Geological Survey Office has been involved in our. Utilizing their mapping and trying to figure out the formations and that kind of stuff. But I, um. You know, I do think that the one thing that's going to help Wyoming in. That realm is um Senator Barasso passed a bill. That we are to not take critical minerals from outside of the US. And so that will help Wyoming. And so I think that. It's still kind of in its infancy, but I think that it's uh an opportunity for. Wyoming to continue, continue its mining heritage. That type of thing. So I think that there's, it's still just being explored.
Well, um, what did, what did, did you want to talk about uh with solar?
Do you have any solar projects? Have you had any come in front?
We will, we will have one.
Yeah. Um, do you, what are you anticipating? Are you anticipating the same type of conversation as when you shed? Um, I guess.
It's all on private land.
Okay.
And um it's a dip, it's a little bit different than a lot of solar because. They'll only be using the tops of hills where there's no grass or hay to be used. But livestock will continue to graze everywhere and then where it's, where it's. Applicable to cut hay, they'll continue to cut hay. And um.
Any concerns from your guys' perspective, the commissioners?
They've already done one small one and that, that's worked out great. And it supplies electricity to the university. And I expect these guys to do a really nice job.
You know the name of the developer?
I do, but um right now I'm not gonna say it. Okay, because I've. Uh, they haven't come forth to the commission yet.
Okay. It's interesting to see too, I mean, the. Leaving the land in circulation, you know, with, with livestock is interesting. I've heard different types of stories of different types of livestock. Heard sheep work the best.
This is, this is a cattle ranch.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard a lot of stories of cows knocking over.
I think they're well, they, they know what they're doing. They're not gonna work, they're not concerned.
Okay.
They, they are, they first and foremost were cattle. So they know, they totally understand. What is involved in, in cattle and how cattle rub on things and.
Yeah, they make sure they get, get that steel deep enough in the ground.
And high enough.
Well, and they, and then they could really fence off each one of those areas.
One, one of the things we're working on, and it does, you know, there, there are some existing guides. Uh, I can, I can send you what WA has already done on uh wind solar permitting and the kind of questions to ask. I don't think it. I'm sure it doesn't address everything you've got. Like, I don't think it addresses light patterns and, and, and record and things like that. Uh, but I, I'll, I can follow up and send you what's already been done. And we'll, we'll also incorporate a lot of that into, into the report that we're doing now.
It'd be really nice uh also to, to other topics, and I'm not sure your scope is this. Uh, building um with that in mind, right? Not using energy, right? Nego watt is the easiest watt to produce. Energy efficiencies, uh retrofitting uh HVAC systems. Um, and then also taking a look at the big sinks or the electrical sinks like for instance, our rec center. Does it make sense what would be the cost to put solar on the parking lot?
Yeah.
It's already been, right? That's already been taken out of production. It's all asphalt and it's right next to the. What type of return on investment are you looking at so that um? We don't have a whole lot of money. I don't know the city has a whole lot of money to try to figure out. Get somebody to study this. And if you guys are doing that, you might as well help us because we're not alone. You know, I'm sure there, every community has that large sink or two or a half dozen school districts, hospitals. That makes sense to put at least some of the energy right where the building is. Um.
Well, I think, I think Arizona is absolutely said yes.
Yeah. And then what do you do orienting buildings, right? The way you build buildings makes a ton of sense. You spend a little bit more upfront. But over time, that building is much more efficient, uses much less energy. And I think for a long time, we have thought about the cost of a building. As the cost of build a building, not the cost to build a building and keep the building running over its lifespan. Um, I think we need to be much smarter about that.
Good points. Yeah, I mean, I, we really, you know, I think you made a good point. You don't really know what to ask. Um, but that's an opportunity that we can like to. Formulate questions for, you know, local elected officials to ask, you know, so they're better informed. Uh, I guess something we can definitely incorporate in our projects.
Well, and we have the university, which means we get a lot of educated opinions. Um, right? So sometimes that's a mixed bag as well.
Guess what is your takeaway then from crisscrossing Wyoming? Um, are there consistent themes that you've heard? And that people express, or is it as different as the county that you roll in?
A lot of the same themes across all counties. Um. The, I, I would say that, you know, most people want to allow landowners to do whatever they want with their land and, and, you know, recognize. You know, private ownership rights. Um, but then. You have a lot of other people that have issues with view sheds and turbines for whatever reason, if they're, you know, whether they're. You know, gets renewables and uh or they just, you know, moved here for uh the view. Uh, we also have a lot of people that, and you guys are all aware of this, that don't want to see any. Other types of energy resources in Wyoming. They just want to take advantage of the coal as much as they possibly can. They don't understand that markets are changing and. Um, not saying that, you know, coal is, we got on in 10 years, but uh need to explore. New opportunities and, you know, potential sources of revenue. Uh, and you know. And see, and I think a lot of people do understand that. She's kind of tough to, on the terms with it in a lot of these communities that rely on coal, we're so low.
I think one, you know, I think Albany County is pretty heavy ag. Um, you know, on the side of the state, it's heavy ag. The one thing, consistency there is the, you know, private property. Rights of the owners, but then you have like the clash of. Um. Like new to the state versus the old guard that's been here that's. Ranched on that ground since it was homesteaded or whatever and sees revenue from like potential renewables. Projects or what have you.
They're the ones receiving.
Right. And so then it's, then you get into that clash and it puts the commissioners or the elected officials in a really bad place. Because then you have to weigh, you know, the decisions of. Well, you have this guy who's been a landowner forever that's gonna keep his 10,000 acre ranch and his family versus. These people that just built this new $2 million house that don't want to look at the view and don't want to see. And so I, that's been a pretty. Uh, consistent theme in. The conversations that I've, I've been a part of and that's a really tough place to be for you guys and. Those that are bringing the projects and so. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, like Sean said, I think a lot of people still hold true to the Wyoming mine hole and. Drill oil and. But, you know, things are changing and. Whether that's sequestering carbon in the poor space or utilizing carbon. Um, yeah, I think it's just. Now we have to start coming around to these ideas and what does this look like moving forward?
How many counties are you seeing uranium development in or exploration potential?
Uh, I think really like it's kind of what the knowledge that I have is, is like the kind of the low hanging fruit of ones that were.
Jeffrey City and.
Yeah.
It's already been established.
Yeah, you know, the mines that have already been there, you know, uranium mining never really shut down. It just was. But, but so now it's kind of starting to um. Bound, if you will, but yeah, I think it's. Just the ones that are there. I think exploration will come. Um, again.
Not that I, I don't think we're gonna see it here, but I, yeah, I was just curious. So.
Yeah, no.
US energy was always a presence.
Yeah, no, it's starting to um come around, come back, so.
I would not be surprised though, um, just with advanced nuclear efforts around the country. There are, you know, half a dozen states that are really heavily leaning into building out their nuclear fleets. You know, Virginia, Pennsylvania, Texas, you know, Tennessee, there's, there's a lot. So I think, I think there's reason to. Believe there will be more demand for uranium in the future.
And I, I think it started in the Biden administration, but the Trump administration maybe has doubled down on uh just securing. Supply chains. Uh, and we get a lot of uranium is made in Russia. So.
And I think that's the one, is that the bill that for us was a critical, because you, Russian uranium is no longer, right?
Yeah, so maybe. Yeah, I think there, when it, it became. Unfeasible to get it through Russia, then that's when uh. The people started doing a lot of uranium claims in Wyoming again.
Yeah, I know.
I know there's a bunch uh that are, they're trying to uh see if they uh prove out uh around the Jonah field.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, so I, I think it's gonna be a player in the future. Um. So, yeah, I think. Wyoming is poised.
Okay.
Will the report have like a, this is a few ideas about where the future of energy is going at the end there. For instance, you know, Green Mountain Power has a lot of people to, they've helped people put batteries in their houses. And then called that battery power when they have out of brownout or a high call. That seems an interesting perspective in a place where renewables, solar, this is a wonderful resource for our community. It's high, it's hot and it's clear. I mean, it's high, it's cool and it's clear. Um, and making that call. I can't imagine us not moving towards some sort of micro grid, whether it be nuclear, battery call, pump hydro. And different in different places, right? The, the resources are different in different places. We are, have the technology would seem to be able to.
I know that.
Those, those ideas together in some sort of smart grid. It can call the wind when it's been blowing. It can, right, when it's sun shining. Um, and so it would be interesting to see if, I'm not sure you guys are gonna cover that part, but it'd be interesting to know where the future is going.
Yeah, that's kind of the overarching purpose of the report itself is to show these new energy types that. Are prevalent and becoming more prevalent in Wyoming. So I think, you know, the, the development project is. This is where we think Wyoming is, is going. And that's kind of why, you know, we shifted and, and took up. Our data centers instead of, you know, critical minerals, just because, you know, that's what we're seeing. We're seeing. A viable future for AI hyperscaler uh developers in Wyoming.
Is there a potential? I mean, uh, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Carbon County's got the largest substation in the country. Um, and in Nestle, North and Medicine though. Um, the power's flowing through Wyoming. Is there a potential for energy? Um, the power is flowing through Wyoming. Is there a potential for energy storage here and? Uh, for demand situations, um, to develop large scale, scale energy storage?
I don't know that world that you guys is.
That's what I'm asking.
There is, but I mean, like we, you know, we mentioned earlier, there's a, there's a few different opportunities. There's, there's, there's caverns, you have the right geological formations. There's, uh, there's pump hydro, there's batteries. I think the biggest issue with this is really, really a problem is that you probably.
You lose it in transmission.
You lose a lot in transmission. So, um, you know, it might make sense to, to do some of that storage. For the state of Wyoming or nearby states, but you know, if you're talking about Oregon, California, it's, it's difficult to make that efficient, most effective. But it could make sense, for example, if you have a bunch of hyperscale persons.
Yeah.
Maybe the power, it has a lot of sense.
Well, I know that the hydro pump has, that, that's had quite a bit of discussion here.
I think, yeah, pump hydro makes a lot of sense. If you've got the geological formation, right? You got access power and the winds blowing sunshine, get it, move it up and capture that potential energy. When I think slow down, you've got, all you've got to do is kind of press the button and, and.
Yeah.
Get those turbines. So they make a ton of sense.
Scotland's been using quite a bit of it, don't they? Scotland and.
I think they do. I think the, the French use it.
Yeah.
And, uh, and we're seeing some folks are trying to develop more in the four quarters area.
Yeah, French, French developers in the nomination work.
Those are fun conversations to see.
I wonder if they are. Yeah, because the, the one that, that I, the discussions that I was in on would be actually using. Sewage as the mover.
Okay.
And.
I know it's right where we're slow more palatable to use that kind of gray water, wastewater than.
Yeah, and, but I haven't heard anything about it for quite a while.
I haven't heard that.
Because that's a, that's a, that's the, obviously the key thing on the nation.
Right. And it's the flushing of toilets that makes the whole thing start to work. Yeah. But like I said, okay, I was in a whole bunch of discussions and then I've heard nothing.
Were we in, uh, Washtenaw County and what were you hearing about this? Maybe. Like we heard about this on our last year or something.
We've got wind and mountains. It makes sense.
Yeah, and geothermal.
Yeah.
Like, for, uh, like geothermal isn't part of the scope, but like you get up around like the thermals. They're really interested in geothermal.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that. The scope was built and I think we traveled the state and then decided maybe the scope was a little smaller and so.
I bet it's been fascinating for you guys to dive right in.
The appetite for county to county varies pretty wildly though, so.
Well, I think that's probably exactly true.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned renewables and, and, uh, I'm not going to name the county names where you can.
Some places are a little more hostile. But no, I think if you guys are good, we really appreciate you guys.
Yeah, I found it be very interesting. So thank you.
So and thank you for your insight. I think that we think all that and try to craft something that's beneficial to.
And if we have questions, can we reach out to you and?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, please feel free to reach out if you have any questions or anything comes up and if you think of something that you'd like to see considered.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
We're sure what we're getting.
Thank you.
I saw they brought in the.
I know, I was going to say I. And this is not all the.
Where are you guys headed now?
Uh, we've got a launch here and then we're driving to Rock Springs. And the weekend camera.
Oh, yeah.
And the weekend camera. Oh, yeah. That's not. So we're actually, we're actually having a data center roundtable discussion with a lot of southwestern county elected officials and commissioners. Down there. So I think we've got about 50 or 60 that are going to participate. And, uh, because they're seeing a ton of interest in that area. Obviously there are a lot of questions and concerns. So we're going to host that and cover on Wednesday night.
Well, and my question about the uranium claims, I've got a buddy who's the, in charge of reclamation for Jonah Energy. Okay. And he goes, I'm seeing sticks everywhere for uranium claims everywhere. And he see. Not real sure how it's going to work or if they're going to prove up, but.
Participating. Because then making it's to that new plant right there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be.
And I know the governor expressed some interest in getting some processing going in the state. If, if we minded here, we might as well process it here kind of thing.
Well, thank you.
You're actually older than I did. We're on 100, so we have.
Oh, really?
Yeah. You must have done magic, Adam. Thank you.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 1st, 2025, uh, commissioner meeting. Well, hope there are no surprises being, um, April Fools Day. Item one on the regular agenda, all to order in roll call. Commissioner Gozar.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Jones present. Will you please stand and join me for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, um, public hearing. We do not have one today. Item four, comments from the public. Would anyone like to come on up, Rob?
Commissioner, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our road and bridge foreman, Jeremy Sellers. He's been in that position for about a year now and with, with Cindy out, he's, uh, taken over some of the, the invoicing. And, uh, gas cards and that kind of thing. So he's, uh, kind of our. We absolutely, we actually have a tech guru in the road and bridge department now, so. He's been taking over that part. He's, uh, been running motor grader up in Rock River. So you continue to do that with, with, uh, he'll also be helping out in the office. Why do you guys have a face to a signature? So.
Well, that's fantastic. Thank you very much for taking on.
So you're the one who's going to get to throw under the bus.
I've never known Rob to throw anybody under the bus. Thank you. Hi Heather.
Commissioners, um, I am here to formally invite commissioners to a fundraiser. That one of our participants is hosting for our program. Uh, they printed out invitations, so I've passed those along. Um, in our program phase five, we have a community service project, kind of give back to organizations that. You know, have helped participants and this participant, Anna Hartley, she from day one wanted to give back to the program. She, um, is very quick to identify that the program has helped to turn around her life and save her life. She'll be speaking at the fundraiser to talk about things. Um, but the fundraiser will be held on April 10th. We're partnering with Laramie Connections, uh, to do so. Believe they've raised about $8,000 so far, which is phenomenal. We will. I believe they've raised about $8,000 so far, which is phenomenal. We will use funds to purchase e-bikes for participants that don't have driver's licenses, those kinds of things, so they can get around. Prepaid phones, phone cards, gas cards, and kind of basic living supplies when they do get their own residence or if they have it. A lot of them don't have things like sheets, pans, you know, silverware, those kinds of things. So those are what proceeds would go for. So I just wanted to formally invite commissioners and I'll leave the invitation and we hope you can make it.
Well, thank you and thank her too. And I'm really proud of her because she's done a great job.
We'll pass that along. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Anyone else like to make public comment? Yes, come on up.
What do you mean to start? Oh yeah. I just had to cut it extra. Anyway, to be brief, I'm Sally Palmer. I've lived here since 1982 and own property up in Albany and at the Buttes and at 715 South 11th Street. So I want to just say three things as quickly as I can. First is thank you for what you're doing on a regular basis, which is to reach across this podium, you know, and say, wait a minute, we're here. And we listen. So I brought you a list of people and organizations like the League of Women Brothers and who you might contact with them. And here's a little book from incredible group, about 50 women, Laramie Women's Club, you know, saying, we're building bridges and we don't need dirt or cement or anything. But anyway, this is, so I just find that you're part of what holds us together. And my guess is that many of you drive down Third Street, you see a giant sign on the Moose Lodge. Do you know the Moose nationally have an organization for orphans?
Yeah.
It's called Heart of Moose, but the sign says, what is difficult for one person is easy for many. So thank you for doing what you're doing. I am part here because I really care about the quality of life in my and in my grandchildren's home. And I know the importance of water. So when I was teaching at UW, I brought over someone who became the water engineer for the state of Wyoming, Lisa Lindemann. And she took my class around Laramie, showing me things and also out near where the there was a mine that the university would just dump things down, you know, and I'm not trying to name any particular names, but there's still things going on, like the leaky underground storage. It's still being monitored at gas amount on Third Street. And this is like 40 years of monitoring by Tri-Hydro, you know, and blowing out what already went underground. So please understand that water does flow downhill and sometimes it's hard to get something that's tests, toxic back out. It's better to protect as best we can when we're here. Do you have any questions of me? You don't want to know when my birthday is?
If you want to tell it, sure.
You're going to give that information out these days.
I'll be 81. Thanks. This is a pamphlet and then no treaty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to make public comment? Anyone online? Anyone online like to make public comment?
Senator Chair, move to close the public comment.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Consideration of changes to the agenda? That's like, really?
Yeah. We were all stirring in Bailey too.
Item six disclosures.
I have none.
And I have none. I would like to get a motion on approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Regular agenda item eight, award the bid for Albany County Road Chip Seal Project to Intermountain Slurry Seal and direct the chairman to sign the contract. Jake.
Yes, Commissioners. Good morning. Just briefly, we advertised three times in the paper, had a held a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting on February 12. We've, we had like eight plan holders, but we only got two bids, Knife River and Intermountain Slurry Seal. Intermountain Slurry Seal was a little under two and a half million. Knife River was 2.9. Intermountain was a non-resident bidder. Knife River was a resident bidder with a 5% preference. Intermountain was still the lowest bidder. Talked to Rob and he had a budget for 3.9 million for the project. So we'll be able to chip seal and strive, take care of all the roads in the county, pave roads in the county. And.
And it was the 11 roads with no exception.
Correct. Yes. We don't foresee any pavement patching or anything beyond still chip seal. But in the event that we do, I have $150,000 in force account that we can apply without having to come back for a changeover. If you have any questions, I'm here to take any.
No, I mean, we accept the bid to, and I guess word the bid to Intermountain Slurry Seal and to direct the chairperson to sign.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jake. Item nine, present for discussion, the presentation of Albany County Community Partners 1% funding request from JNJ Second Chance Small Holdings.
Hi Commissioners.
Hello.
So just like you guys heard all the presentations last Tuesday that had applications for city and county, we did have one application just for county. And they're here today. They have about five minutes, just like all the other presentations do. 10% for you.
Come on up.
Good day Commissioners. Hi, my name is Jennifer and I'm with JNJ Second Chance Small Holdings. Yes, it's a long name, but it kind of tells you a little bit about ourselves. JNJ is my daughter, Jana and I, Jennifer, and we started this rescue kind of as something that happened during COVID. We ended up with all these animals being dropped off at our little farm. We ended up with over 250 animals now at our rescue. We take animals into schools and help kids learn to read. So the kids read to the goats and the goats eat the books, which is quite humorous, watching these kids get a happy memory other than just, you're wrong, you're not doing well. Well, our goal this year is to create a multi-use building that we can have individuals come out to our rescue and spend time with these animals doing goat yoga, doing mental health days for businesses to be able to come out and spend, spend time with the animals here at our rescue. In order to do this, we're asking for help from the county of $25,000. We have two bids in from two different contractors and they fall right just over $25,000. But we have a private person that's willing to raise the rest of the funds. The $25,000 will give us a wooden frame building with metal siding, glass windows and everything. This will also be ADA compliant. Our big thing is that everybody is allowed to come out and spend time with these animals. So did we have any questions? I know it went really fast. I also brought a baby goat in if you guys would like to meet him. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Where are you proposing to build this building?
It's on the rescue.
Okay.
We do own the land outright. And so it's a 30 by 40 building that is attached to our baby area where people, where we can allow the goats to come in and spend time with individuals. We also have miniature Highland cows that oh darn need being brushed and loved on.
Jennifer, when a business comes out and wants to use your goats or your, your animals, is there a charge associated with that?
For mental health, no. We do charge if like a corporation wants to come out as a corporate event. It's a minor charge. Basically, it's just to help get other staff in to help us with being able to give them the best experience possible. But mostly we are a full nonprofit, 100%. We're a 501(c)(3) registered in the state and federally.
Yes, my second question.
Yes, we are fully registered. We do have a secondary side, which is a for-profit side that we go to businesses or corporations that help us raise the funds so we can keep doing our community outreach programs, such as we go to veterans centers and senior centers and bring baby goats in diapers and clothes and have the veterans and seniors spend time with the animals as a enrichment activity that will allow them to, we get a lot of great stories of these people going, I remember when I had a goat when we were five and his name was Billy and he used to headbutt me every time. And we, we've had individuals that have come up to us and spoken to us that haven't spoken in months. Our goal is with this building, allowing those people to be able to come out, you know, during the winter when we have, you know, oh darn, we have wind. I mean, we don't have any wind out in Rock River at all. And having a building where we can have individuals go into where it's a safer environment for those that are not as stable on their feet, that can sit down in a chair in a safer environment would be wonderful. So this is not only helping us, but it's helping our community be able to do things. And we want to also operate to like our local 4H or anybody else who would like to use it as a community building style thing.
And it's out in Rock River.
Yes, it is out in Rock River. Yeah.
And does the nonprofit, would the profit side hold the land or does the nonprofit hold the land?
The for-profit holds the land and the nonprofit rents it for a dollar a month at this time.
This was for discussion, so we won't be making a decision right now.
I fully understand. If anybody'd like a flyer, you do have extras.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much Commissioners for giving me the opportunity to present.
Item 10, present for consideration, a request for an exemption from a large track subdivision process situated in Section 2 Township, 16 North Range, 76 West of the 6th Prime Meridian. George.
Morning Commissioners. So James and Leona Rogers have requested an exemption in the large track subdivision regulation. This is to create a 35 acre tract from a 1,211 acre tract of land. The county subdivision resolution, Chapter 5, Section 5, requires exemptions from large track subdivision regulations to meet the following criteria. They need to provide a survey. They need to address water rights, provide a water supply study for any proposed water system, or provide the disclaimer, no proposed central water supply system. And the division shall create 10 or less parcels. This one, they did get a little ahead of themselves. They filed the survey before we had a chance to look at it. So we're kind of working backwards, unfortunately. Normally we request a draft of the survey. We review it. We make sure it meets all the requirements and then we bring it to you guys to grant the exemption. We did look at it. The requested exemption did meet all the requirements to be exempt from the large track subdivision process. I did notify the property owners if they have any plans in the future to do this again, just to go through the proper process.
So it wasn't a huge deviation. It was just a.
No, I mean, in a perfect world, yes, we would like to look at the, the survey to make sure they have everything on it because there's some disclaimers on there that they need. I mean, they got it right the first time, which is good. Sometimes it doesn't work like that, but yeah.
George, just a quick question, not about this, but just kind of overall, if, if somebody was to do this 20 times, right? Is that legal? So this says 10, you know, 10 lots or less. Could they go through this process 20 times and kind of circumvent that?
Not for the same original parent parcel. That parent parcel, that's if they're divvying that one up, they can do 10 or less and have the parent parcel left over. So yeah, it really comes back to what the original deed for the, the original property says. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you have a motion? Further discussion?
I move we accept a request for an exemption from the large track subdivision process situated in Section 2 Township, 16 North Range, 76 West of the 6th Principal Meridian.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, George. Item 11, present for approval, quote from CDWG for hardware refresh in the amount not to exceed $24,037.20. Adam.
Thank you Commissioners. Before you today is essentially this round, so this year's recycle for computer refresh. This includes a couple struggling Windows 10 workstations that are still user adjacent and need to be replaced. It would be our frontline workstations and several of our public offices. We're going to start seeing kind of a failure rate along those as they're outside of that. We're on a five-year rotation with those. And then several of the detention center video, video stations, those are super old precisions that are looking to be replaced and that's in spares, of course. As a part of this also includes some monitor initiatives. We have several very old ones that need to get retired out. And then doing the last office that is not dual monitor, which is the sheriff's office would allow us that ability. So we've seen huge efficiency increase. Everyone understands the efficiency you get from a dual monitor. So looking to shore up on that. Any questions for me?
I'm just curious, what's very old?
On a monitor set, it's probably eight to 10 years. Essentially doesn't support display port, right? It's a DVI, so that you're running through adapter sets, VGA native, barely even pushes 1080p, so.
So the, the fact that you're getting 20 workstations and 20 monitors, that's just a coincidence.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. They have different, there's different avenues for both. That's just where the numbers kind of landed. Yes.
I, I move that we approve the quote from CDWG for hardware refresh in the amount not to exceed $24,037.20.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Item 12, present for approval, evaluation agreement between Ring Central and Albany County, Wyoming for communication systems.
So this, I guess legal recommended bringing this before you guys, just because of the, essentially the large nature of the phone system. So we've all, just getting everyone up to speed here, right? We're all kind of understanding that the phone system is needing to retire here in 2025. Couple of things, it goes end of patch here at the end of 2025, and then Mitel just filed for bankruptcy. I don't know if it's a restructure or true buyout. I haven't seen a lot of information out of that yet, nor have I had a chance to research it, but we do know that there's several adjustments that are coming on that end. So our current system is in a very shaky condition as it is. We've looked at several cloud-based, subscription-based phone systems as well as a couple on-prem, doing just kind of general matrices, you know, what's good, what's there. My recommendation would be starting here with Ring Central and proof of concept. It'll be the IT department and then we'll be looking for a front-end department to take it on to stress test the system. Right before we do a big dog and pony show, we want to really make sure that it fits all of the needs of Albany County. And we want to make sure that it works in a large, you know, in that corporate environment. So that's kind of the step take. And then after that, we'd be looking, you know, to essentially onboard departments, look at onboarding the courts, right? We provide phones for the courts. And just do that dog and pony show, make sure there was nothing that was missed in the initial POC or any ideas that we have. I mean, I, I think my check sheet, my current comparison matrix is probably three pages long, different attributes and things that we're looking for. So in some of this review, really, when we're looking at spending, you know, a good chunk of money on, you know, renewing the system, you have two avenues that you can look at. You can look at, hey, I'm going to find another on-prem system. You're going to spend 200, $300,000 to revamp to be exactly where you're at. Or you can look at a cloud-based system, which gives you a lot more feature set. There's a lot more development. It's the only, it's pretty much the only place developments happened for the phone industry in the last five years. And so, you know, for the same money, that's, that's going to be my kind of driving recommendation because you'll get more availability for your money. I, I don't want to see us spend the money just to end up right where we're back at. I do agree with the premise that phones are there, phones should ring, things should answer and be able to do, but there's a lot more that phones can do in terms of communication and availability. So questions for me?
So, and Adam, this is a, this is a internet-based phone system, Ring Central.
It is. Yes, sir.
And so people could, in theory, use their phone connected to an app, their own personal cell phone, and it would be like calling from the treasurer's office or from Roden Bridge.
Um, is that correct? It'll, it'll show that number, not their personal cell number when they call.
Correct. So for our, I guess, remote-based offices, the very mobile offices, um, all of that opens up as a cap, uh, capability. We are able, one of my hopes and initiatives with this is essentially maybe retire some of the county-issued phones, shift that over to maybe a a subjected cost over to the employee to allow the utilization on that phone if their job sees fit in that manner. But yes, a hundred percent availability pretty much anywhere in the world for any of the device that you see fit. Um, bring your own device, corporate device, all of it, um, we'll structure. And the big thing with the system is just making sure that we are you know, able to retain the records, right? Someone doesn't have to submit that phone or something later on. And that's, that's the biggest thing is get away from that, right? So, you know, reporting and FOIA capabilities with the system are one of our highest priorities. The ability to pull the metadata, who, what, when, where, why, and present that in a legal aspect, um, is of the greatest importance to us because we want people to feel confident when using it that they're not going to just lose something out of their pocket. Um, but yes, to, roundabout way to answer your question, Commissioner, yes, sir.
And that will also help you on the backend of a FOIA request. Uh, you'll have the ability as the administrator to say, Pete called at nine thirty to Roden Bridge and it lasted this long.
Correct. Pete called this. Um, it opens us for SMS capabilities with your constituents. You don't have to give your personal cell to people anymore. It allows it all to direct through a county line. It allows you as elected officials, as commissioners, as department heads, as employees to separate your personal life from your, your corporate standing, um, and allows those functions to carry forward.
Duper, thank you.
And that's, that's part of the initiatives that we're looking for in this.
I already use it through the business, so it works great. I, I can be on Starlink up on Fetterman Road and still call from my office number.
Nice.
Yeah, so one of our largest kind of stakeholders and one of our largest limitations here is the fact that, um, you know, if that, if that circuit gets cut here locally, we have no phones. Um, redundancy goes up, capabilities go up, accessibility goes up all. Um, but I won't lie to you, it carries a subscription cost. The, the org will pay more over time to have that utilization, but I think it's smart. So we start here. Other questions?
Well, I guess will there be other, uh, companies that you're going to look at or is Ring Central got through your matrix and you wanted?
Exactly.
The concept.
Yeah, so we, we evaluated Zoom. Um, they're currently in a crosshairs with the FBI, several of their uh, federal partners, they're in their doggo set, so that's kind of put on pause. Um, if they sort it and can go that direction, it's another great look at. Um, we look somewhat at Teams, not a big, I have a hard enough time getting people to launch Teams around here. I don't, anything, there's just a kind of a stick stigma that goes on to some of it that, uh, so, uh, but luckily Ring Central has a team integration and so if you choose to use that direction, you can. Um, those have been the three major cloud providers that we've looked at. We've also looked at Mitel's prime on-premise business set and then we had the previous Avaya IP office from way back when. That's when I first started here, we did an evaluation on. And again, I'll stick by my evaluation of, don't reinvest on a on-prem system. So, um, yes, they're, they're top of the matrix and that's where I want to target our efforts.
We can still own the equipment. We don't have to lease the equipment. The subscription is solely based in the cloud provision.
That is correct. The, the phones, right? So you go and buy, you know, multi, multifaceted phones, right? They're just IP phones. They can connect into whichever backend we, we pick, which is nice. Um, I will say it's probably about seventy percent of the phones will need to be repurchased. We have some cross compatibility with the newer phone sets that we have now, um, but several of the older ones will not. So it'll be a partial refresher hardware, which comes with any reimplementation.
But you can also do a SIP emulator on a desktop or on a workstation, so there's not actually a physical device as well.
Um, all of this will carry a soft client is what you're referring to there, which will give us, um, the ability that you don't even, I mean, I've worked on this initiative. You guys have seen it from me already on handsets going out, you know, retire phones next to you, use your workstation, you know, you already, to answer the phone and answer the questions that you need to, you have to have the workstation in front of you. So if you can't get to the workstation, being able to answer the phone is another part, um, in my opinion. Because, you know, ninety questions out of it will be related to, we have to look up on that workstation. Yes, all of them have soft clients. They'll come across, they'll follow us. Um, it's, um, Ring Central is the Mitel, was previous Mitel cloud offering, right? They took it, rebranded and sold it off. Um, when Mitel decided to not go into the cloud segment, essentially they started and so the actual native capabilities, the app, they're very close to what everyone in the org is already used to with our current Connect app. So we have good native flow sets. It's not a, you know, it's a new interface, but it's not far off what people have already seen. Um, it's a long, we're drawing out roundabout, but.
I, I, I'll move to approve the, uh, between Ring Central and Albany County.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Get you off the podium, sorry.
It's okay.
Item thirteen, ratify mountain and plains environmental justice grant application. Bailey.
Morning Commissioners. Uh, your last meeting, um, David Gerch, um, presented a project to you. Um, this is the application for it. I submitted it yesterday as it was due yesterday by one. Um, so this is just that project. It's the Casper Aquifer Monitoring Project that he had in mind. Um, so the request that we put in was for over a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Uh, twenty-three thousand five hundred fifty of that is indirect costs that we put in. Um, last year I had you guys approve a ten percent indirect cost on all grants that would allow it. This is actually a fifteen. They didn't want us to put in a ten. They wanted us to put in the de minimis that the feds offer right now and that is fifteen, so I did put fifteen in. But I figured he would not be mad at me for that one, so.
No, this, the way you wrote it, it's, it's just for monitoring. There's no
Correct.
No evaluation or there's an evaluation, but Jay, it's just for ongoing.
Correct, yes. Um, so David actually did majority of the narrative. Um, I told him, I was like, I'm not in your world. I don't understand at all. So he did majority of it. I went in and fine tuned it all for what federal funding usually likes and we're hoping, we're crossing our fingers and hopefully get the funding. But from what I could tell, it would be voluntary monitoring on wells that already exist and then possibly for, uh, testing wells as well. I actually even had to call my husband on this and I'm like, what are you talking about wells? Because he's water over at the state. I'm like, need a little more information to fill this out because David was unreachable. So he thought I was a little nuts, but. So, but this is just the ratification.
I move we ratify the mountain and plains environmental justice grant application. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item fourteen, discuss grant opportunity to celebrate the semi cen- centennial. Two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the founding of our country. Bailey.
So, uh, Commissioner Hoff, uh, emailed me a couple of weeks ago, um, this grant opportunity. Um, who, I believe you got it from Tourism Board, yes. So, um, after reviewing the application, I reached back out to Commissioner Hoff and asked, what would you like to do with it? What direction do you want me to go here? So, um, he asked that I put it on for a discussion item at today's meeting, so that's what I'm doing. Um, this would be a maximum of ten thousand dollars that we can apply for. Um, Commissioner Jones had brought up to me that, hey, maybe like courthouse lights might be good, like the Christmas lights that we do. I don't think it quite falls into what this is. I can certainly ask, there is a contact in here and I can reach out, but I don't feel it's quite what they're looking for. So.
It was more cultural and historic and impact on.
Yes.
I was thinking of red, white and blue light, you know, so. Good idea.
Yes, and the other piece of this is, um, which I'm unfamiliar with, is there's supposed to be an officially recognized county committee. I don't know who that is and I, again, feel like if I reach out to this Nick, um, he might be able to put me in the right direction for who Albany Counties is. Um, because I do.
I think we have to form it.
Okay, and we, we may have to form it and then we would need.
And I also, when I forwarded this to Bailey, I also forwarded it to Karen, um, with the Historic Preservation Board. Um, and they've kind of done some brainstorming on what to do with it. And I think we heard that at the interviews two weeks ago. Um, so something along those lines where.
It'd be interesting to, uh, maybe use the mural, murals as some sort of way to tie people into the artist and the, uh, thoughts behind it and the motivation behind it. I've seen people liking about, um, all the time, um, or walking about, going through the murals, looking at them. It'd be great if they could tie into something that said, you know, that, that artist came out on headphones or something and said, hey, I wrote, that did this mural because of, and these are the things I was thinking about. Um, you might have an economic driver there as well.
I didn't even think about the murals, but that.
Yeah. And I really didn't. I just didn't want the charity to slip through. I, I didn't have any ideas, but.
No.
It's kind of a funky.
It, yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, and I believe it's, I, just from the, um, some of the requirements in there, I think it does uh, come down from federal funding because no alcohol, no food, um, no entertainment, which is absolutely CFR two hundred guidelines. So, um, because bringing it, I'm like, well, you know, we could just like make that pancake breakfast bigger. And I'm like, well, there's no food allowed, like for Jubilee Days, you know? Um, but yeah, so I mean, um, the mural, mural project's a good idea. I have, this application is due June thirtieth. So I can look into that a little bit more if you'd like. Um, you guys can think about it until the next meeting and let me know more ideas, whatever direction you want to go.
But we're going to have to establish an ad hoc committee.
Correct.
We couldn't just use like Laramie Public Arts or Albany County Historic Preservation Board as the.
I don't know. I really don't.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
Yeah, I, why don't I reach out to Nick, um, with this funding and get a little more details about what that committee is. And maybe there is one that the county really just is not aware of that is already, um, and maybe he would know or what we need.
Or we could designate a, an interested party as the committee.
Yeah. So I can certainly do that and come back to you at the next meeting, if that's what you'd like. Okay, and in the meantime, you guys think of ideas and I can look into the mural one.
Bailey, thank you.
Yes.
Item fourteen, discuss, uh, fifteen. Present for approval approach license for Willow Waters LLC on County Road five thirty Lawrence Road located in section two township sixteen range seventy-six west. Rob.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, this for approach license, uh, I think the township section is, makes, is familiar to what we did this morning, so. Now they're asking to get the, uh, access to it from Lawrence Road.
Any issues with it?
No. I move we approve the approach license for Willow Waters LLC, County Road five thirty Lawrence Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Rob. Item sixteen, present for approval, application for catering permit for altitude chop house and brewery for the Wolf Ranch event space Kentucky Derby party held at one forty-two Vista Grand Way, Laramie, Wyoming on May third, twenty twenty-five from two PM to six PM.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. This is an application for catering permit for altitude chop house and brewery because they are a holder of a city liquor license. The city has the letter approving them to use their license outside of the city limits or outside of their jurisdiction. Um, it is on their agenda for tonight, but other than that, everything is good to go.
Move we approve the application as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item seventeen, take from table the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming for implementation of the Laramie Growth Area Plan.
We have to move to take from the table. So I move to take from the table the IGA between the City of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners really for the implementation of the Laramie Area Growth Area Plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item eighteen, present for consideration the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming for implementation of the Laramie Growth Area Plan.
So upon talking with David, um, the, there's no change from the city. They can't guarantee water or any kind of hookups for future development um, in that area. So I, I'm going to move that we decline to sign or enter into an agreement with the City of Laramie.
Yeah, I would love to see both planning departments have time to work out and hammer out an agreement. So I'm not sure a declination is, is the way to go on this one. Um, I would like to remand it back to them with the changes proposed by this commission. But I haven't heard those, those changes, uh, announced in public, what, what the problem is with the IGA, um, so that these groups can work on it.
Okay, I, we have a state statute that uh, requires that the, the commissioners take into consideration anything that the city wants to do next to the, um, city boundaries. And I think that's sufficient and, uh, is, is good for the county. And so I am in agreement that we would decline this.
And I did talk to the mayor. I, I, I don't know that this eliminates the growth. Um, I just asked that it be enumerated. Um, and with the planning department, if they have an area that they're looking to develop outside city limits that they would have a concern, um, we'd certainly be interested in that growth and that development and making it a turnkey ready for the city. But, um, carte blanche on the map itself and having fully executable control outside city limits is, is something with no guarantees. It, it puts a lot of burden on the county and the planning office. And, uh, it, it, it provides a, a lot of benefit to the city should it ever be exercised, but they're deserving a lot of control outside.
Uh, my reading and, and Matt, you can maybe be helpful to me is there is nothing uh, declaratory that the city has power over, that the city, the county doesn't have the ability to stop. Um, I think that's a big misunderstanding in what's gone on with the governmental agreement. Um, we know there are cities in Wyoming, one very close to us that failed to do this type of work and are bound by subdivisions and growth in the city is becoming really difficult to do. The city and the county spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's the only plan that was awarded uh, in the nation last year, um, the Growth Area Plan, uh, for its excellence. Um, to stop that and say we should do this by piecemeal is the reason we did the Growth Area Plan. Piecemeal does not allow for modern planning. Um, there's nobody that is going to be forced to be annexed under this. I know that has been fancied about. Um, and so I just working together with your partners seems to be the smartest way to go. Um, I'm not sure why, um, I haven't heard it talked about. What is exactly wrong with the plan? Um, it would be nice to hear that out loud, um, so that people can work on it, the planning offices. I'm not a planner. I got, uh, certified in that. But we do have people in the planning office, both in the city and the county. Uh, they could be helpful with our associated planning and zoning commissions, both in the city and the county. So, um, that seems to be the way to go. Um, I think you throw the baby out with the bathwater by declining this and say, we'll go about it on a case-by-case basis. We wasted four hundred thousand dollars or whatever the number was, if that's what we're going to do, because we could have done that before. And there's a reason why you don't do that.
We didn't waste it.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure what that means. Uh, are you not a member of the county commission?
I am, but we didn't spend four hundred thousand.
We spent some money on it, two hundred thousand, I think.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Per agency.
So, um, and I've actually think, and so do the people who evaluate plans, think that was an amazingly wide spend, but, um, obviously we have a different take on it. However, when streets don't match up and pipes don't match up, that is a failure of planning.
That is why you consider whatever the city wants to do so that those do match up. And if we, in, in the time that we've had been under this statute, it's worked very well.
Well, I, I would just.
And, and the city does not partner well with private individuals. And they've put themselves in this position because that they do not partner. They dictate, they do not partner.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure how to, to, uh, discuss that piece of it. Eighty percent of your constituents live within the city. Yours, mine, Commissioner Hoff, so you have a duty. So you have a duty to do the best you can for eighty percent that live here and the twenty percent that live outside the city. Um, hammering out agreements is how you do that. Throwing away agreements is not how you do that. So, um, obviously we have a disagreement. Obviously you know how I'm gonna vote on this one. Um, but it'll be up to you all to discuss what you didn't like about this agreement and why you didn't think it could be improved and you just decided you wanted to throw it away. That's for you to, the water for you to carry. It'll be up for me to decide and to ask or to my constituents why I thought this could be improved and why we should let the process work. I'm willing to have a conversation.
They had the public hearings. It was very clear when the people came that the people in the county do not like this.
What metric were you using, Terry? I mean, do you have some data behind that? Um, anecdotal information is not data to be planned about. So did you take a survey? Was there?
You should have been at the meetings and then you would have heard.
Oh, I went to all of them.
No, you did not, because you were not at any of the ones that I was at. And the people outside the city limits were very unhappy with this. Because they believed that they were not using the right, um, I'll say, others go ahead and say it. They were using, um, um, incorrect data to try to, to force this through. And, um, I am absolutely against this plan. I was against it in the beginning and, um, it, it does not benefit the county. It benefits the city, but it does not benefit the county.
Well, the city's in the county, um, and so I.
Outside the city limits, it's, it doesn't benefit. Inside the city, the city has more power all the time, but it takes, it does not allow the people of the county to do what they would like to do with their land. It's another form of control. And it's another form to get people that are live in the county to live in the city because the, the city doesn't want people to live in the county.
Would you point to this document where you would say that that is?
I'm not gonna point to the document.
So I, I, I will push back, Commissioner Gosar. In the plan itself, it does specify to which building standards would be used and executed in outside city limits in that zone. So if there's any development, that's why I say it doesn't harm anybody trying to do a development outside city limits that would seek annexation. Um, because then the, all those structures could be built and the city could oversee that um, until it's annexed, but it does lay out in the city's document that the, the building code would be specified for construction of dwellings outside city limits.
You know, that happens in Laramie County right today.
I do, and I'm not trying to create a problem for the city.
Yeah.
And there is a need for all of this. But this is casting a huge net over development that may or may not ever actually occur. It, it becomes burdensome to our planning department because if it falls under the mapping that is laid out and agreed upon, then it, it, it falls to the county's planning department, all four people in that planning department to enforce what the city is requesting.
It's interesting, none of them are here to talk about that.
I realize that. I, I, I wasn't aware that they weren't gonna be here.
Um, so obviously you, you all have decided what you'll do, um, and you know which way I'm going to vote. Um, so I think it's behooves this commission to understand why there are building codes in Laramie County because it's buyer beware at this point in Albany County. Um, you do not have to build the code, um, fire, flood, um, and there's nothing that, and so if you are a buyer in the county without those recommend, without those, uh, oversight, you get what you buy. Um, Laramie County is a different approach. And so maybe, maybe that's how we want to roll here. Maybe we don't. I would like to know if I bought in the county that the home was gonna stand for what I purchased it for, to be a home that didn't have problems, but, um.
There's plenty of problems with homes in the city.
Right, then they can be addressed by code. So fair enough, um, to which will, I think that this is a plan that could be improved upon. Um, and I think we should send it out to both planning offices with our direction on how to improve it. Um, but that's, that would be my vote.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to deny entering into the intergovernmental agency agreement between the City of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming for implementation of Laramie Growth Area Plan.
Second. All those in, in opposition?
I think you have to ask in favor.
Oh, in favor, okay.
Aye.
Aye. All those in opposition?
Aye.
Um, motion carries. Item nineteen, executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute 16 dash four dash four oh five AII. I have a motion.
Move to entering an executive session as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twenty, going to executive session
May I have a motion to return to regular session?
I move we return to regular session from executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-two, action regarding the executive session. There is none.
We just need to...
I don't think that we need that.
No action. It's a discussion.
Matt's the...
Matt?
(laughing)
Um.
We just need to...
Set the executive session pursuant to the same statute in two weeks, should you want.
Two weeks or...
Well, no, it won't be a talk. Adam lives in there.
You would...
So it'd be a June...
My recommendation was that... Or is that you have the conversation...
With him before. Yeah, gotcha.
Oh, gotcha.
We could set one for the next... So...
The next commission.
It's the last meeting or the second meeting in the year.
Yeah.
The fifteenth, yes. I don't know, I can... I don't think we have time.
I don't see why anything needs to be...
I can just put it on.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fair.
I think everything we discussed can be made public at this point.
I can just put it on. I'll just put it on the agenda to go into executive session for the second meeting.
Okay, item... So may I have a motion to... Oh, we're already back in regular session. Okay. So, item twenty-three, approve vouchers for March twenty-twenty-five.
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, so you know further business before the Board of County Commissioners. May I have a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Actually, it's one good... Nope.
She's all right.
Awesome. Yeah. You're good?
Yep. You're doing okay. Yeah.